Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening we have Dr. Kerbel and Mrs. Murphy who are going to give us some, a summary, a brief, rather brief summary, yet thorough, of our MCAS and PARC data that has just come back from the state. Mrs. Murphy?
Good evening. Is that on? Yeah, that should be it. So, good evening. I wanted to start tonight where we ended last January. Last January Maureen and I presented to you about what our goals were going to be for PARC moving forward, and this was a slide from that presentation. And so it was the last slide. And so our goals for PARC was, were technology preparation and support, administrative and teacher readiness, parent readiness, and student readiness, to prepare them for not only in 2016 and 17, but for when the accountability and the assessments counted, in 2018. So the road ahead, the next gen MCAS, also called MCAS 2.0, will include some PARC items, along with new items specifically created to assess Massachusetts learning standards. MCAS 2.0 will be designed to be taken on a computer, and the plan is to phase it in over the next few years, but as you all know, just like last year, we're going to continue, and we're going to be assessing all of our students in grades three through eight this upcoming spring like we did last year. I included a couple of slides from the state because the accountability and its alignment or non-alignment to some of our assessments recently is, has been a little bit confusing to many of us. We have been in conversations with the state, looking at what data we received from PARC, as well as our accountability status. And as you know, when we came to you last year, we said one of the reasons why we wanted to do PARC was we want to prepare our students for the upcoming assessments in the years to come, and also we were going to be held harmless. So this first slide just reminds us that in 2016 and 2017, the accountability, we were not going to be, go from level two, or level three, or decline for any of our PARC schools, but the high school, because they were MCAS, could possibly change levels. And I said, we wrestled with this slide a little bit, and I said, "I'm going to include it and try to translate it a little bit at a time." So, will the results of the PARC test in spring 2016 and spring 2017 affect accountability determinations in 2018 and beyond? So, will the PARC that we've been taking last year and going forward, or MCAS 2.0, will that affect our accountabilities moving forward? Now, we've all said, and one of the reasons why we didn't want to switch to PARC was, we were very concerned about how it was going to be reported to us, and we were not going to be measuring this year to what we had for the last couple of years, and what going forward. So, the answer from the state is saying the district accountability assistance systems uses multiple years of data to calculate school percentiles. So, when you look at our PARC data, you'll say, huh, all of our elementary schools declined six points in accountability, but they didn't all do equal. Why is that? Why when Richard, you know, when their performance was almost at the same level as Kane in a number of places, and that Jarek, you know, hey, the numbers looked pretty good, why did they all decline? When you ask that question, it's because it's multiple years of assessment. So, it's not just one year, and most across the state, almost every PARC school declined. Not always true, but comes increased, so it went up, their rating. So, the state recognized that the multi-year transition from MCAS to PARC, to MCAS 2.0, and from paper-based to computer-based testing will require additional study and analysis, and schools cannot be placed in a more or less advantageous position based on the mode of test, paper, or computer-based selected in a given year. So, they're saying they know in fact, we cannot be punished for giving computer tests. Were we? They, we're going to have to look at the data file when it comes out in a couple of months to figure it out, but in theory, we will not be. And they will revisit the existing accountability targets and metrics in light of the new test standards, and the very recent reauthorization of the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, before making any final decisions with respect to 2018 and beyond, and they will consult with educators around the state. So, the way I interpret this is, they're telling us right away, most likely, they're going to change the rules again moving forward. Okay? So, let's just recognize and make our own goals. So, our accountability levels, Kane Elementary, Jarek Elementary, and Whitcomb School are level two status based on not meeting gap narrowing goals, which is, which is the same as it's been. Richard Elementary and Marlborough High School are at level three status based on placement in the lowest performing 20 percent of similar schools. Thus, the district stays at a level three status. That is not a change for Richard School, but it is a change for the high school. And I, we did, this is a, I included a couple of slides that are different than what you will see on the Department of Education website, because we have been looking at this data since August. I included a couple of slides that were shared with the leadership team in our August, during our August retreat. And just to look, the fours and fives are the red and the purplish, and that is meeting and exceeding the state. And they said, when we look at this, we're not unhappy with the goals that we set for this year, and the performance, but it did affect, when you look at the accountability, it was a decline in the, in the accountability status, based on this data and multiple years. And the same with math. So, the strengths, when we look at our original goals, we thought that our PARC goals are technology preparation and support, all students successfully completed the online testing. And our other strength was administrator and teacher readiness, we were able to manage the online systems on a classroom, school, and district level. Our goals going forward, we mentioned a few times, we were really distracted by some things that we thought were going to be issues with students online. We thought that they were going to have a hard time, and we needed a lot of mice, and they would not be able to navigate the Chromebooks. Not as big an issue as we thought it was going to be. We should have spent more time in preparing them to slow down, that it's the same thing, how they look at it. And then parent readiness, the parent reports included very limited information, and not translated in a format that is accessible to many of our parents. So, those are two things we'll be working on. And so, Dr. Kerbel?
Hi, everyone. I was just thinking, this is my 15th year or so, reporting out MCAS results. I was in Haverhill, Winchester, Newburyport, and now here. So, I think I have an interesting perspective. So, I do want to say, all the places that I've been in, including Marlborough, teachers work very hard, students work very hard. And so, I'm going to do is, I'm going to report the results. And I think that I could say from the outset that I like the direction that Marlborough is going in, so no matter what, when I show the results, don't wince, knowing full well that we are, we're in a good place. All right? I wouldn't say that unless I believed it. And so, let's take a look at the results for MCAS at the Whitcomb. So, we have grade five, grade and grade eight. Take a look, what you're going to see is proficient and, or higher scores. So, in grade five, will decrease by 6 percent, and increase by 3 percent in grade eight. The strengths in science, we show a small increase in the advanced scores, and I think a small steady increase in proficiency. Now, the opportunities, well, look, 40 percent and 36 percent, it's not where you want to be. Okay, we want to be higher than that. There's no doubt about it, no matter if that was 48 or 50, you want to get higher. One of the things, one of the issues, is that in fifth grade, the test is based on everything, all the materials and everything that were taught, or the curriculum that was taught in K to four, and in grade eight, the test is based on grade six, grade six curriculum, grade seven curriculum, and grade eight curriculum. So, a few years ago, you had isolated, isolated curriculum. So, for example, you had Earth and Space being taught in grade six, Life Science taught in grade seven, and Physical Science taught in grade eight. So, the last several years now, we've, we've transitioned so that in sixth grade, you have Earth and Space, Life Science, and Physical Science. It's just that in grade eight, this group has not caught up. So, this, during this year, we would expect that students will ever have a chance to review what was taught in sixth grade and seventh grade, because everything's integrated now. And so, we like to think that our students would do very well in this year's test. Okay, at the high school. So, at the high school, I just look at it, all right? So, in English, looking at the slides, proficient or higher, a decrease of 4 percent, in mathematics, a decrease of 8 percent, and a decrease in 3 percent in science and technology and engineering. Now, if you, if you go online, if you take a look at some of the results, they fluctuate a little bit, regarding if you carry the decimal point, or more kids take the test and pass. So, there's a retest coming up in English and math. Want to say the high school teachers donating their time to give extra support to students, which I think is terrific. Knowing that, kids are coming out of certain electives, and their grades are being frozen, so they're not going to lose anything in those grades, so they can get the extra help so they can pass the retest. So, my hats off to teachers there. One thing to note, I'm going to let, I want you to look at this, call, this slide, and see if you can figure it out before I tell you what this is about. I'll count about five seconds. I'm not going to call on you, but you're a good student. So, if we took a look at just the Marlborough students who were in grade eight, and we follow them to grade 10, you can see that our students that have been here have done well. 84 percent to 93 percent in mathematics, 53 to 75, and then 40 to 79. If you follow the kids from grade three on, there's a dip in certain grades, we know it. Teachers are working hard, they're working hard with their supervisors, we appreciate all the effort, okay? And we're hoping for a change in this year's scores. So, strengths, this is interesting to note that in ELA, all of your grade 10 STEM students are in proficient and are advanced. And that's the same, almost the same in mathematics, actually. I think it was around 95 percent. One of the things I do want to mention, because it's on one of the slides, so I'm going to give you a lot of credit, because you started a STEM program, and you had a pilot in the middle school, and now this year, you have STEM, and all the students have access to STEM projects. As a result, you have heterogeneously mixed classrooms. That's a great thing. That's going to pay off for you, for, not you, for us, all right, this coming spring. So, in science, one of the things we did notice, we, a lot of students walked away from the open response questions. They didn't even bother, okay? And so, there's a percentage of them that would have made the difference if they had completed at least got one or two points, and I think that's the effort for this year's teachers. Areas of opportunity, grade 10 was below in the state in every category, below the state average in growth, but not closer than the 40s. And I mentioned, I already mentioned about the grade test results, the science, teachers want to improve on taking and responding to open response type questions. I know that that was something they wanted to do last year. Let's see, 14. Okay. Elementary actions to address opportunities.
I'm just briefly wanted to, even though the PARC doesn't affect our accountability, where it doesn't mean that we're not taking steps. And we've talked about this, we have the new K through five journeys and foundations. We just want to also mention, I don't think I embedded it here anywhere, but the teachers have been working on sharing some of the online assessments, and revising and editing them for grades three and four. That's one of the action steps they're doing, so that the students are prepared and used to taking assessments, and knowing that what they do on a computer is not a game, but actually counts, and demonstrates that they're meeting their goals. Also, we have continued adoption of writers and readers workshop model, and writing with color strategies to improve writing. We're increasing the use of universal screenings and standard benchmark assessments, specifically aligned also with, with our Go Math program, and in mathematics, because we are still not happy, not only with our literacy, but our mathematic achievement as well. And we have elementary interventionists that were added at the K4 buildings that you all know, and those are specifically, they're using the data, they're working with small groups. Those students were identified at the end of last year, and those intervention groups started on day one this year. And then we have the district-wide professional development to support Go Math, Journeys, and Foundations.
Okay, actions to address opportunities at Whitcomb. One of the, one of the best professional development trainings I have seen is, has been at the Whitcomb. So, we have a particular trainer who's working with certain teachers, like, to help them, to help students with their writing. She's terrific. So, we have lab teachers, and so some of the type of training that was in the English Language Arts program is taking place this year in History and Social Studies. A lot more literacy strategies, similar to what I just mentioned, regarding the, the training that's going on now. And then there's going to be a renewed emphasis on lesson and assessment alignment with the Massachusetts frameworks for English Language Arts and In mathematics, this is actually holds well for English and for science. So, implement the STEAM curriculum across the school, increase time on learning by over 14 hours for each school year. And so, I just want to mention the STEAM, I just, and I think these are key, project-based learning, projects used to promote rigor, relevance, creativity, and collaboration, and critical thinking. So, as we look at all the lessons for our students, rigor, relevance, creativity, and critical thinking, we should be able to see that in all lessons. This increase in time for teacher collaboration, so it used to be 1:45 minute meeting, is now it's, is a three one-hour meetings. So, a lot more time for teachers to collaborate. And then, and then there's, and I believe Principal Daniels explained this last week, implement the math in ELA enrichment block for grade six. Secondary actions. Make sure I don't miss anything. One other thing, as I mentioned, I'm going to go back to this slide. So, one of the things we want to do is build higher order thinking questions into regular assessments. So, if you think about this, our students have to pass a rigorous, standards-based assessment, that's called MCAS. It's high stakes. And so, to do that, all of our curriculum has to be aligned, and all the standards have to be addressed. And so, all of the lessons in our classrooms have to be rigorous. And so, what does this mean? Not necessarily more work, it just needs to just stretch kids' thinking, so that they're working hard, but on target. Not too low, not too easy, not too hard. So, secondary reactions, as supervisor Jody Reyes said to me, it used to be that English Language Arts teachers were responsible for reading and writing, and they need help. So, therefore, the social studies department is doing a lot more work in the area of evidence-based writing. So, they're getting training for that. And I've been in a couple, I was in a couple of classrooms today, two classrooms that were just great. And I wouldn't say it unless I meant it. Also, one of the things that we recognize is that our teachers are using Writing with Colors, which I know you've probably had a presentation on. Some of the subgroups are not using Writers with Colors, so Jody Reyes is going to work with the special department and the ELL department, and use more Writing with Colors in a way to help students target their work. Mathematics, the PLC period for most teachers of common subject areas, so we're seeing, and I noticed the principal of the high school came in, hats off to him, because we're finding now that the high school teachers are working more, closer together in these professional learning communities. You don't usually see that. In typical high schools, you don't see that. So, it's, it's happening this year at the high school. Implementation of more math support for students, and continuation of working with students who are coming up from the Whitcomb as part of STEAM for this fall. One other thing that Dan Riley wanted me to tell you, is that more algebra standards are being taught in the geometry course this year, to reinforce what they learned in ninth grade. And in science, increased collaboration in common lessons. I think they have to continue to support writing, especially in the open response area, do a lot more evidence-based work, research evidence, and they're also using Writing with Color strategies. They have to work on their open response questions, not just units, but it's got to be part of their homework, some part of their daily lessons, okay? Engage students in higher order thinking, which I said earlier, okay? And continue to transition. So, as the high school moves towards this new, this new phasing of the 2016 standards, right now, the high school science teachers are using the 2011 standards, and are asked not to change. But eventually they will, so they're getting ready for that. And I believe Mary's going to finish up.
So, though we have a number of different steps that we're taking at each level, we also have some district-wide steps that we're taking. So, we're expanding the MTSS implementation. I believe Heather's going to be sharing a little bit about that with you today. We did have a meeting with the principals, just to get an update on what's going on in each of the buildings, including the K through six intervention enrichment blocks. Mark has revised the implement, the SST process, and has rolled that out to all the schools. Continue alignment of curriculum, including the 2016 science standards, which we know is something that we need to address at the elementary schools moving forward. Just at the same time, we're implementing a new literacy series. Grade six, seventh, and eighth grade are participating in universal screenings for the first time with FastBridge. And then a district-wide focus on classroom instruction, which includes student engagement, well-structured lessons, meeting diverse needs, student motivations, which we're all look-for, so that we agreed at, that we'd be looking at in all of our classrooms and instructions. The REBUS, the, the professional development we're doing, including the trade, the trainers, and for, focused on instructional strategies that maximize student achievement. And then department, team, grade level goals, goals all aligned with the FY17 district goals. Thank you. Any questions?
Question from the committee, Ms. Paul Henjoe.
Thank you. So, one of the questions that we have every year is, if, I'm not, not expecting it right now, but if you could break out for us at some point, the percentage of students intent, taking 10th grade MCAS that were in the district since kindergarten, as opposed to kids that show up, you know, end of ninth grade that are being tested?
So, that was the co, we started that with the co, with the eight to 10 cohort, yeah. We did start to look at the three, what I asked Mr. Huddle for, was the three to 10 from last year. And then I want, what my next step is, I want to see that multi-year, I want to see the impact of our alignment to the common core, and if it gives us any feedback on that, and in what grades. So, those are things that we started to, but Mr. Huddle's in on Thursday this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee, Cecily?
I got a few, sorry.
That's all right.
So, with this data that we're trying to utilize, which obviously we can't be held harmless for some of this information, and now because we've made that switch to PARC, which we get why, it seems like we need to really pull on to the rest of our assessment calendar, to really understand what's really happening. Because we also, because of MTSS, we went down the path of adding in FastBridge, which was universally supposed to be that screener that was really giving us information. But I guess my question really is, are we really utilizing all of that information as fully as we should be, to help and better understand how FastBridge is either helping us, or not, and how it is showing us that either we're meeting what we're seeing from PARC, MCAS, or not. Because, as we've all said, you can't use one assessment tool and know that you've got it all, right? So, I want to understand, where, where are we having our paths crossed, so that we can find if we're getting the same information, or we're getting differing information from our assessments? Because I still am having some concerns about our consistency and how we're utilizing our assessments.
So, and we, I think that our discussion and what's happening at the buildings is that assessment isn't an event, and that a universal screener should be a brief screening, so that we can identify what students need additional assessments as well. One of the discussions that Heather and I have been having is that the structures of setting up a universal screener, and what that encompasses, and people looking at the data and all those structures, are really, really important. Is FastBridge the universal screener that's going to give us the best information? That we still don't know. Because a lot of that information, at times the recommendations is pretty canned. So, it may, you, a classroom teacher may have five students, they may have the exact same score, and the exact same recommendation, and the classroom teacher will tell you, "That's not what I'm going to do, because that's not the intervention that's needed for these five kids. Therefore, I'm going to do this other follow-up assessment, and it's, I'm going to target my intervention that way." So, it's much more involved than just the FastBridge discussion, and we want to make sure that we have multilayered, so that we're supporting every student.
And consistency across all of the different school buildings as we're feeding in, because I think that is, has been some of our discussions in the past, of not necessarily having as much consistency from all of our elementaries feeding into the middle school, and is all of that information really following that kid the whole way through, so that we're able to see where we need to make adjustments along the way.
Now, every teacher, every ELA and math teacher at Whitcomb School are going to be, in the next two weeks, they've all been trained. So, now they're going to go through the process of administrating a FastBridge assessment with their class, and getting those reports. So, as they're going through all that, they're looking at what that data is, and they can see what their data is. It's on the dashboard for all the students that are, that are coming in as well. So, they have all that data, but that's just a starting point that lets us know, okay, now what do we have to look at? As is the elementary assessment calendar. That's the minimum that you have to do. Some of the principals are going to say, "All right, yeah, we're consistent on that, but I also want to make sure that I've got, see this picture here, and I'm going to do this, this, and this."
Right. And then I guess the, the other tie for me is the discussion you were leaning back towards Brian Daniels coming last week, and having the STEM to STEAM discussion, and the enrichment program. So, you know, tying hand in hand with the MTSS. So, you know, tying hand in hand with the MTSS interventions. Right now, we were talking about, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, but I think it was, the intervention was 80 students out of approximately 300, a team of 300, 320. So my question is, you know, are we really hitting all of the kids that we need to be hitting with the intervention? And are we utilizing that enrichment block necessarily as appropriately as some of this other data is showing us? Because if we're seeing that the fifth graders are suffering, if you will, in math, and I'm only just basing upon this, you know, MCAS information, are we digging deeper and maybe should we be utilizing the enrichment block in a different way?
In the fifth grade, that intervention block looks a little bit different. That's extra journeys time.
Right.
And so, because they're taking advantage of the instructional time that, that they need that.
I'd like to respond to that as well. Today, we met with principals or their representatives from each building, and Mary Murphy and Heather Geary are co-chairing MTSS this year. So we met with them first to get baseline of information before we meet with the entire steering committee. And the questions that were asked are as follows. Who from your building is going to represent MTSS? Because every building needs to be represented. Number two, what are your assessments looking like? How are you using them? Where are you in the tier one, tier two process with respect to RTI and with respect to PBIS? And the third question, we asked everyone in sequence, was what does your intervention slash enrichment block look like? And follow-up questions such as, I asked this one today because I was thinking, what if a student self-selects? What if they would not be identified necessarily by one of these assessments, yet internally, they would like the, the enrichment, I'm sorry, the extra dose, if you will, not the enrichment? Or if a parent self-selects? And answers were appropriate, that we're looking at that in next iterations, but at least it's on the radar. So I think much more will become available and clear when we find, I think we have a date on the calendar for the first meeting or maybe not, not yet.
No, we had to have this meeting first.
Okay.
But thank you. That, that's very, very helpful. I appreciate that because it's almost some of the discussions we had when we were talking about the progress reports.
Yes.
Right? We all have different thresholds as, you know, parents, teachers, community, community members, whatever. And we were talking about the Signal, you were telling us about the, the app that you can, you can make your own alert about if a kid hits, you know, whatever, 80% on something and it alerts you. We're all going to have different thresholds. And for me, I think it's really important, and you all may agree or not, that if there's a self-selection, whether it be by the student or the parent, that has to be taken into consideration because they may feel that they need the intervention, and then it's our job, our duty to then figure out how we can get it to them. As opposed to only meeting 80 out of 300 or 320, where maybe, or maybe not, we're capturing it and are, and are we fixing whatever that issue? Or are we letting that go by the wayside and then having a bigger issue to have to deal with down the road?
Agreed. And self-assessment is a skill that I don't think we teach well enough in school. And so this is part of self-assessment. I feel like I need some help here.
Right.
Self-advocacy.
Well, and I think that's really important, which goes back to how that enrichment block is being used, especially where we were just talking about it last week. This is a big change. And so we want to make sure it's being used in the most effective way possible. And if we're having some data that's showing us that overall, there's some students that need some more help, whether it's the science area, ELA math, whatever it is, that we're using that time wisely to get them that help.
Other questions from the committee? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As superintendent, I have the honor of interviewing and selecting high school students for various awards. And Mr. Colery was very willing to make this selection, and I said absolutely not. I, this is the best part, I think I said this to all of the students, the best part of my day was getting over there bright and early one morning to interview and talk with these, these scholars. So I have four awards that I'm giving out this evening, and I'd like them to stand up when I say their name, and Mr. Colery will give them the award after I read a brief bio. And I did not script these, this came from the guidance department. I would also like to thank our students and Mr. Colery for coming over this evening, perhaps cutting short their, their festivities or cleanup, as it were. They had the senior superlative dinner tonight. So thank you for coming over here, and thank you to the parents as well. So our first award is a Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence, and this goes to Emma Lincoln. Emma, do you want to come stand up by Mr. Colery for a second while I embarrass you a little bit? Emma Lincoln is an outstanding young woman who has earned the respect of fellow students and faculty because of her academic scholarship, leadership, and personality. She has challenged herself academically throughout high school by selecting and excelling in honors and AP-level classes, and as a senior ranks first in her class of 260. Emma has received multiple faculty awards each year. She has consistently earned a second or third place finish in the high school science fairs. Emma was selected by her peers as National Honor Society Vice President. She also serves as co-president of the National Art Honor Society, vice president of the Interact Club, and is a multi-year member of the Spanish Club, Habitat for Humanity, TRI-M Music Honor Society, and Jazz Ensemble. She was honored to have been selected for the Rotary Youth Leadership, the Ryla Award in 2015, and Girls State in 2016. Emma has always had a passion for mathematics and plans to study math education, and we hope to hire her in the Marlboro Public Schools in four years. The next award is the same, a Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence. Honored to present this to Alexander Trin. Alex, come on up. Conscientious, hardworking, brilliant, and talented, described Alex Trin. He sets very high standards for himself and is passionate about learning and challenging himself. He has had great personal growth since high school and is now comfortable talking with anyone presenting in a class or leading a team. He's a positive role model, always upbeat and willing to help others. Outside of the classroom, Alex is a talented musician and is the principal flautist in Wind Ensemble and earned a gold medal at a music competition in Washington DC for outstanding musical performances. He earned first place in our district in the American Mathematics Competition in grades eight and 10, and received the Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute Science and Math Award as a junior. He has his black belt in martial arts. He was selected to receive faculty awards in English and Spanish and represented our high school in Boys State. He was elected president of National Honor Society by his peers and is a member of the TRI-M Music Honor Society. Alex is always thinking of new ways to improve current technology and hopes one day to do groundbreaking research in the scientific field to make the world a better place. He dreams of majoring in computer engineering and programming and hopes one day to own his own tech application company. Next, we have two recipients of the NESDEC Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership. And the first goes to Kayla Usufery. Kayla exemplifies the qualities highlighted by this recognition: leadership, community service, and academic commitment. Kayla is an A-plus student with a cumulative GPA of 4.8, who ranks second in her graduating class of 260. Throughout high school, she has challenged herself academically by taking all honors and AP-level courses. Kayla has been class president since junior year. She has been selected for faculty awards from six different departments. She's an active member of the National Honor Society and the National Art Honor Society. She represents Marlboro High School as our Rotary Youth Leadership Awards attendee in grade 10. Kayla is also a member of the Regional Student Advisory Council. She has attended many Massachusetts Association of Student Council conferences and implemented much of what she has learned at these conferences. Throughout her leadership positions in clubs at the high school, she has given back to her community. She is the co-founder and vice president of our high school's new club Habitat for Humanity in an effort to provide more community service opportunities to her fellow students. Kayla is a wonderful young woman who is committed to her education and to bettering the world around her. And she loves Caesar. She, that wasn't in here, but I know that about her. She plans to study neuroscience. The last NESDEC Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership is given to Megan Sari. Come on up, Megan. Diligent, dedicated, and selfless, Megan Sari exemplifies all the qualities of a high academic achiever and positive role model for the student body. Since her freshman year, Megan has challenged herself with a rigorous course load of honors and AP classes, having earned all As with a GPA of 4.78 and a ranking of fourth in her senior class. Megan takes the core academic studies very seriously, but also leaves time for her other courses that she loves, including music. Megan has been a four-year member of the Mix Chorus and this year is a member of a cappella choir as well. Megan's true passion and talents are on the soccer field. Having played soccer since she was four years old, Megan dedicates much of her time to the game and aspires to play at the collegiate level. Megan's desire to achieve and bright personality will serve her well as she aims to major in biology with a pre-med track next year in college. Thank you so much. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Mr. Colery.
Congratulations.
May I, Megan?
Yes, you may.
So I just want to congratulate all the students. You make Marlboro proud. And to the parents, if you go on the website, on the school committee link under the meeting, this is being taped, and you can just pull it right off so you can send it to your family and friends.
And if you're looking for the write-up, if you go to the superintendent page and click on the date of this meeting, you'll find the report there for you as well to print out for grandparents or, I know how that is. So congratulations to all of you. We appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And Jeff, that's something to print. That's huge.
Yeah, that's true. We're ready. So just want to give the folks a chance to exit.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Thank you. The 2000, continuing with my report, it's not as, as good as that, that was the best. 2016 MasQ Conference was recently held on October 19th and 20th at Gillette Stadium. I wanted to let you know the team that went. Of course, Tom Platy went both days, our new director of instructional technology, more about him later. I went, Mark Gibbs, Heather Geary, Andy Burnaby, Brian Daniels, Josh Torscha, and the three instructional technology specialists, Chris Randall, Cheryl Polkowski, and Nancy Marisi. Keynote addresses and sessions on various tech topics were top-notch, as always. We also explored options as we look ahead to replacing the projectors, which will soon need replacement in the next few years. We have some, some different thoughts on that. So I'm going to pass around a picture that I just got this morning, so I couldn't really include it in your packet. It's a, a presentation to the Kuwaiti educators. On this, this past Friday, our instructional technology director, Tom Platy, made a presentation to a group of 25 visiting scholars from Kuwait, participating in a Kuwait study tour, studying educational practices in Massachusetts and New York. This group is made up of 20 Kuwaiti principals, two representatives from the Kuwait Ministry of Education, and a representative of the World Bank who put this tour all together. Tom presented at the Park Plaza in Boston on the topic, Using Technology to Support Student Learning in the K-12 Classroom. And you'll notice he is not dressed, you know, in a suit. In this picture, he's dressed, he, he told us the other day at our superintendent council meeting, he likes to dress when he presents as a student, from the student point of view. So he was pretending he was a sixth-grade student in Carolyn Caddell's history class. And that's why he has on a Patriots and he had a hat on. It works for Tom. Tom is well-known in the state for his expertise in the area of instructional technology, and this honor only serves to underscore how very fortunate we are to have him on our team. And the picture just is, is amazing. What an honor. The fact that they came to Massachusetts and New York, of all the states, and then someone from our district was asked to present on such a hot topic, I think we should be proud. Finally, I wanted to talk about the Vocabulary Bowl. Vocabulary acquisition, as you know, is one of the keys to literacy and to minimizing any gaps that students come to school with, because they've either lacked preschool experience or they're coming from a home that doesn't have a rich spoken vocabulary. Under the guidance of Humanities Supervisor Jody Reyes, middle school English and social studies teachers piloted an interactive online vocabulary site last year, and it has really taken off. The school has purchased a subscription, very, very reasonable. Users abound in all disciplines, just going back to what Dr. Kerbel said about no longer is the spread of literacy just under the domain of English teachers. We even have an engineering teacher, Mark Kobel, as opposed to Mark Kerbel, Mark Kobel, who is targeting vocabulary as his smart goal for his evaluation. The number of words student mastered put Whitcomb School in September as the second overall position in Vocabulary.com's Vocabulary Bowl, behind only Natick High School. So that's pretty good. And in the number one position for all middle schools. Congratulations to Jody and all of the discipline teachers at Whitcomb for getting our students hooked on words. And I have one more late-breaking invitation that came to me today from Peggy Thorson. Invitation to the Reality Fair from the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce, Marlboro High School, and its BPA chapter to attend the Reality Fair, which is Tuesday, November 1st, from 7:30 to 11:30. And we're pleased to announce that the Massachusetts International Academy, students will be participating again. This is a, a wonderful tradition that has helped to solidify that link between our district and MIA. And it should be a wonderful opportunity. I myself have attended many years, but will be at the STEM Summit at the DCU Center that day, and I know many of you are going as well. But I wanted to extend the invitation. If you can stop by, it's at the LMC at MHS.
From 7:30 till when?
Till 11:30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick report tonight. Number one, just to let you know, the business office is finishing up our financial reporting for the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We've actually finished it. I'm now in the review process, and we will be submitting that by Thursday at the latest. Also, the food service balances decreased last month. Hooray. I like to thank Roland, and specifically, I didn't put it in here, I am remiss in doing so, Julie Wapum at the high school, for working hard to get the, the lunch balances to have three languages on there, English, Portuguese, and Spanish. So that has helped us reach out to even more people, let them know that there is a balance in the lunch count. I did include the report for you to view as well. For online payments, we had, September was the largest month we've ever had since adopting the online payment program. It's a 17% increase over last September. Again, just hearing great things about the program. Whenever people email for their PIN, they're immediately thankful that they can see all of their children's purchases and an easier way to manage the account than having to remember cash every single morning. So again, we, we thank everyone for using the program. With the impending ratification of the custodian agreement, the business office is calculating FY18's budget salaries. We actually finished it today, and we're starting to put that information into our budget. So that will be forthcoming over the next two months. And then on, on the 19th, Andy White and I helped MSBA officials tour the Jarek, the Kane, Hildreth, Whitcomb, and the high school. I just want to really put a special thanks out to the principals and assistant principals who worked with us on this project. The MSBA is working on a more comprehensive study of every single school in the Commonwealth, and they will produce a report that ranks the schools from one to five based on their condition and based on the facilities and anything that needs to be upgraded. So this, this has actually been very helpful. I learned a lot during this process, working with Andy and seeing all the work that's been done. And I've asked Andy to actually digitize the information so that way we can get it off paper and make a record of all of these wonderful things we've done. I only had to call John once because of a question I couldn't answer, but it was just a fantastic day. And at the end of the day, we actually had zero questions from MSBA. They were able to just come, get the information, and move on. So I was really thankful for all the good work everyone did to make that a big success. So just want to say thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Any questions?[1797.57]
Thank you, Mike.
Any questions? Special Education Report.
Good evening. How was everyone this evening? Just to give you a quick update, Karen Sturgis will be retiring in November 2016. I'm not sure of how many years specifically it's been since she's been in the district, but I do know it's over 25 years. So, we'll be sorry for her to leave us, but John Fletcher has been working and is replacing her as the Assistant Director of Special Education. So, some professional development-focused areas, just a review. The district has been working on having a better IEPs training focused on building capacity in your district. It's by Carol Kozinski, and I may have said that the wrong way, but it's being hosted at the Aspen Valley Collaborative. This is a five-day training for a group of individuals from team chairs to special education service providers in buildings, so there's a team from each building attending this training. So, three days were in June, the end of June, and two days are this fall. And from those trainings, we're creating training modules for the district. So, we will have ongoing trainings with new staff and returning staff each year and for refreshers to keep us moving forward and being compliant when writing IEPs and to ensure that we have the best robust IEPs for our students in the district. There's also a subgroup that's meeting to work on those training modules after school, so we're really excited about the work that they are doing based on this training. Another thing that we're working on is that we have a group working on building curriculum opportunities for students in our sub-separate classrooms. Brian Ziman has been leading this group. We've been started working with the Early Childhood Center, elementary school, and middle school, focusing on our pathways programs and our life skills programs. The goal is to look at the curriculum that we have and continue to build, and so we have more robust curriculum and learning opportunities for these students and also to increase the technology experience. Out of this, we're piloting TeachTown, which is an online program for students, and there's two components. There's an academic and a social skills component, which we're looking forward to. We did a mini-pilot over the summer, and now we're doing a full-year pilot. They're coming to do a training on November 8th for the academic piece and also for the social pragmatics piece. If it goes well this year, we'll be looking to continue that for the students moving forward. In October, elementary building-based teams attended a three-day workshop with Michelle Garcia-Winter at Ross Green on social thinking, self-regulation, self-awareness, and much more, which was really good to see, the one we were able to send, building-based teams, so they can go back to their buildings and really bring that work to their daily environment. The transition specialist has begun to work at the high school, and the next month, she's going to be getting to work more, transitioning her skills also to the middle school and looking at how we can continue to build upon transition opportunities for the students age 14 and up. As you know, many of our students do turn age 14 in the middle school, so there's a lot of work to be done for age 14 up to 22. So, we're looking forward to that work. So, looking at inclusion, as you all know, inclusion is definitely something we want to continue to grow upon in this district. For PD Day, we had inclusion specialist Dr. Dina Traniello provide a full-day workshop for our paraprofessionals, focusing on how they can support inclusion opportunities as paraprofessionals in the classrooms and to ensure that they're providing our students with the best supports possible. And we're looking to bring her onboard to really focus on inclusion opportunities, inclusion at the middle school, and we're working out on what that's going to look like right now with her. The Marlboro Public Schools has joined the Mass Urban Group. It's led by the Executive Director of the Mass Urban Project, Susan Reese. She is the retired Executive Director of the Accept Collaborative. We're really excited for this work. They currently, other members, to give you an example, I'm not listing all of them, but you've got Worcester, you've got Boston, Framingham, Cambridge, Fall River, Brockton, Lynn, and a few others. So, it's pretty much across the state. They meet five times during the school year, and then they have about a four- to five-day retreat over the summer. So, our first meeting was in September, and the next meetings in November, which we're looking forward to. This will provide us an opportunity to really speak with the local districts about what they're doing with the challenges that they face, because we're all facing similar challenges. So, we're really looking forward to that opportunity. As we mentioned last year, our CPR mid-cycle review is this year. We worked diligently over the summer with a team of individuals reviewing files and also prepping and doing data entry for DESI to prepare for this. They will be coming in January for an onsite tour and also to review the files. The onsite tour will, sometimes they do that, sometimes not. I haven't gotten complete verification on that, but they're definitely coming to do their own file review, so we'll keep you posted on that. Other updates that are more district-wide that aren't specifically related to special education: behavioral health supports. The Whitcomb Middle School Transition Program is up and running. They've reapplied for the Metro West Grant for another two years, so they just submitted that in early to mid-October, and we should know in December what the outcome of that is. We're looking forward to that. We've gotten a lot of recognition from Metro West and through the Bright Program in Brookline, which is the Brookline Community Health Center, Bright Program, because of how far we've come in such a short period of time, which is really nice to see. The building-based team there has really done a lot of hard work to put this together, and they also worked over the summer to work on the procedures and protocols of the program. We've also been working with the Director of Guidance with the DBT trainings and also looking at other trainings that we can bring to the districts and looking to branch out with that. There's a significant, we have a good number of hours still left through the grant to provide, and we're trying to determine how to map that out, whether we do parent outreach support and also mini-courses and some possible PD Day support. We have increased our membership to Family Success Partnerships through Aspen Valley Collaborative. Last year, it was just a pilot at Whitcomb Middle School, and this year, it is open for the entire district. We're still ironing out the details of what that looks like as we form the teams, but we are excited to have that support for the families in the community. When we met last year and asked the team their thoughts on it, and we brought everyone else in from the district, and they heard about what they were doing, it was pretty much consensus to if we could, as a district, increase the enrollment in the seats to do so, because it's definitely been a huge support. They provide, and they also have the bilingual support that the district really requires. They have social workers, licensed social workers that speak Portuguese, Spanish, and Spanish, which really can support our families who require the translation services. MTSS, as Maureen gave you a quick update earlier, that we did meet today to kind of iron out some details as we move forward with the change of leadership this year. So, we are planning to start the steering committee meetings, and my office will be putting out invites once we solidify the team in the next day. Just to give you guys an update, I think I did mention this last year, but Dr. Claudia Rinaldi did move out of state to Florida. She's still working at LaSalle, but she's not here full, she's only in the state about, I think, once a month, not for a full week. So, she will not be working with us this year, so I just want to update everyone on that. And also, as Maureen noted, Mary Murphy and I will be co-chairing that team together.
Any questions for the committee, Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. Two quick questions, if I might. When you were speaking about that Family Success Partnership, how are we reaching out to the families to make sure that we are expanding? And since you mentioned how it had been focused on Whitcomb, but that you're trying to push it out, how are we?
So, what happens is if we have a situation at the building level where the school adjustment counselors and the building-based teams that are working and looking at a student and knows that this student really needs support, getting to the agencies, and there seems to be that that's the piece that's missing, is how can we set the support against the parents getting there? How can we support them and ensure that they can get the mass help, that that's a barrier? It really, work comes from the building-based teams, and from the building-based teams, a referral is put in place to the FSP, and they review the referral with the, I guess, our district FSP team, and from there, we determine, they determine whether or not this would be an appropriate fit.
Okay. I guess I just, you know, some of those numbers, just making sure, I know that's been a big area for you, that you, you know, that we want to make sure that we're utilizing these resources and that we're making sure that we're getting out to those students that also may not necessarily stick out immediately.
Yeah, the building-based team's really been doing a nice job. John probably can speak a little bit more of it, because at the middle school last year, we put him as the point person, so he's kind of been working directly with AVC throughout the pilot year. But the, you know, I think last year, we started with 30, 35 seats, and we're up to, I think, 45, 55 seats this, 45 seats this year. And we're, they have three tiers, so there's tier one, tier two, tier three. We're on the tier, we're reaching, we're getting to tier three this year. But the one thing we learned at the end of the school year last year, which we didn't realize, is that if there's a student who's receiving FSP support at the middle school, and there happens to be a student at the high school or a student at the elementary school, they don't just service the one student, it's the family.
Right.
Which is helpful.
That's great, because it needs, I mean, that makes so much sense to make sure you are reaching all of them. So, thank you.
I mean, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's only a small portion of students that we're able to support through this, but it's something. So, hopefully down the road, as the district and community continues to grow, I mean, it would, I think, I mean, Michelle and I have spoken about this, community health centers in the district or something, or in this town, in this community or something. I think that's something that we do need to start looking at. I know Framingham and other areas have these support centers for families, and it's a gap that we see here.
Well, and you guys all move forward on making that one of our district goals, if you will. I mean, that's one of the arms.
It's a community issue.
So, it's really a community issue. We had the impact that hit when, you know, we had a large amount of homeless families that came here, and, you know, Gabby, along with a lot of other folks, really stepped up to do what they could, but now that you see something, you know, you can't turn your back. You've got to step out and get something done. So, thank you on that. And then I guess the other question that I had about tying to the behavioral health supports, and maybe this is something we're going to dive deeper in in our discussions with the MTSS grouping, tied back with the FAST bridge assessments, part of one of the reasons we had gone down that path was, you know, it had a behavioral element, and we had talked about somewhat exploring usage of that. I mean, I know that we've got so many other things going on, and you just can't do it all, but is that something that we're looking at potentially still? How, I know we were looking at, like, what are things that can be, ways that we can call out students so that we're acknowledging that we have issues to have to address and how we can target to take care of it? Is that something we're going to be looking at?
I think when we come back to the table with the steering committee, that's something we can bring back to the table to talk about, is looking at, when we're looking at students, the behavior specifically, because as we, you know, FAST does have that behavior component, is what, if we're going to have a tool, is that the tool we're going to use? Or is there something else? There were a few other tools we talked about last year, but they were put on the backburner.
Right.
So, I think that's something we need to table as we all come together.
Yeah.
And have that conversation.
Howard Muscat had also given us a number of different ideas of other things that we could be doing, but yet we needed to kind of be prepared to deal with whatever those issues were once they were highlighted.
Exactly.
You know, so, okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Bowden?
I just have a quick question about the DBT training. I know we're doing a lot of work training staff, and the way DBT works the best is if the families are involved as well. So, I'm just curious, are we making, I know, not necessarily us train, you know, using our resources to train families, but if there are families that are interested in going through a DBT process?
So, as part of the hours that are provided to us, we can choose how we want to use those hours, and I do, I'd have to go back, we had a meeting last week, and it would be beneficial to bring Sharon into this conversation, but what was, there are, we can do, I think, like, overviews for families and whatnot, but as part of the grant, as part of training families, I can't answer to that specifically.
No, I'm just questioning, I'm just asking if we are directing families to where they can get DBT training if they want to.
Oh, if the families want.
For families to, resources.
I would guess possibly, but I can't answer that fully, I think, because Sharon Buckley is overseeing all the DBT.
Okay.
Training. And she's been organizing, she's been working with the Bridge to get that set up. She's, through the grant, there's a certain number of individuals going, and then through one of my grants, I'm sending in other groups, because we didn't want everybody out of the building on the same days.
On the same days. Awesome. Great, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Thank you, Heather.
No minutes. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation.
They all left.
Seeing none. Custodian ratification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let you know that we did have two very productive sessions with the custodians and came to an agreement. We're very happy that it only took two sessions. I wish they all only took two sessions. But we, both sides are very happy. The custodians have ratified, and now this contract is up in front of the school committee for their ratification. Just to let you know that the contract increases are five and a half over three years. So, it's in line with all of our other bargaining units that we've settled recently.
I think the goal should be to beat the two sessions, so it's only one session.
Well, you've got to each present your side. Motion to approve the custodian.
Motion made seconded to approve the contract. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to them and for all the hard work they do every day.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Members' forum. Reports of subcommittees.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing? I forgot to mention something during my report. I just wanted to point out that Roland Van Campbell has given me his notice that he's going to retire this year, so I just wanted to, I missed it in my report, and I apologize. Heather reminded me when she told me about Karen up at her report, but I did want to let the committee know that Roland is going to retire this year. He's giving us an open-ended retirement, because Aramark is working to replace him, so there's no set date at this time, but Jay Gostitis, whom you've all met, has come in and done presentations here, is working to find a suitable replacement, and Roland's working with us during that time period, so he's not saying this is the date. He's allowing, you know, the process to go through, which we really appreciate.
Good. Reports of subcommittees. Any reports of subcommittees? Seeing none, members' forum. Ms. Tennessee.
The only thing I wanted to mention, just in positive thoughts, because we don't have Rupel Patel here tonight, but we have a wonderful person here, so that's good.
A reasonable tax, Emily.
Exactly. But the reason that Rupel's not here is because she is with the group that has traveled to Japan with the Akaruno Exchange Program. So, I just, I have to say, it's just such a great program, and I wanted to encourage any family members that are considering this, please reach out and talk to some of the families, you know, past and present, because it's really exciting to see the students' eyes opened, and I will also say, I'm already seeing, you know, Rupel comment about her eyes opening about these wonderful opportunities just with this one exchange program, and as we've talked about before, we have so many great opportunities that our students can take part of, and just wanted to call that out, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Any other members? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose carries. Thank you very much.